All right. Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock. We're ready to start our regular session. We call this meeting to order. This time, let us stand to our feet and have our invocation. Let us pray. Oh, God, our heavenly Father, the maker of all things and the true righteous judge of all men. Father, we come here tonight with first and foremost, thanksgiving in our hearts. Thanking you for all the many blessings in which you bestowed upon us, this little city that sits upon a hill. Father, I thank you for each person that's here. I thank you for our council, our administrator and our staff. Father, we ask that you bind us together with those cords of love that nothing and no one can separate. And in the end, as we do right now, we will continually give you the praise. Father, now we come here this hour to deliberate the business of the church. Let us not forget you and how you have made it for us this far. And we should never forget, we've come this far by faith. Father, we thank you for this moment. Again, bind us together. We rebuke that which is evil and we latch on to that which is righteous. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Let's have the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have very little comments tonight, other than the happy to be here and happy that you're here. I came in this chambers earlier today and I looked at that wall there. And I looked at all of the past mayors that sat in this chair. And I just thank them for giving me that opportunity to stand on their shoulders. I can go back all the way to Mayor Finley. He was the first mayor I knew. And we loved and respected that man. He did so much for us as a little town. If anybody can remember back then in the late 60s, early 70s, I think the only one on here is Mr. Robert. He was here.
I remember all of them over there.
Well, you got me beat. But I just remembered him because I was a little boy and you remember how the Christmas parades used to be? He's the one that really had it to where downtown was one of the prettiest places you could be on Christmas. And now we're going back to that. I just thank God for this opportunity to really move forward and also to be productive. I promise you that that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna move forward and do as best that I can for this little town. And I just know in the future, we're gonna be able to do some great things. You probably saw me on the news. All they want to talk about most of the time is the tower. That's news for them. But that's one of the things that we're gonna really try to tackle this year. And it might be just a little win to some people, but I think that would be a big win for us here in Pickens to have that tower really, really looking good. So we're gonna be working toward that. I'm hoping to get with council and get closer and to work more effectively. I'm gonna do my best and do my part to make sure that happens. I'm just glad to have this privilege to serve you in Pickens. So that's about it for my comments. I just wanted to basically thank you and ask you as council and administrator and staff to let's always ask the question when we get ready to make a decision, what's best for Pickens? If you do that, you won't have any problems and it won't be any conflict because I believe within my heart, everybody in here wants what's best for this little town. Thank you so much. Now we're gonna have comments from our citizens. We have five minutes. We ask you to come and and I want to set down some ground rules we never talked about before. When you come here and make comments, you don't make comments to any individual, staff or council. You're making comments to the council as a whole. I just wanted to throw that out there because I don't want us to get into a mode of attacking one another when sometimes things don't go like you think it ought to go. We're committed to working together. I'm just asking you to be civil and also to be kind. And we're gonna be able to be very productive, I promise you. Whatever you address, you don't address any single person. You're addressing the council as a whole. Okay? First one is Ms. Pam Winters. Lives in the county and she's here to speak to us. Hi, Ms. Winters.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here, so I want to start by congratulating the mayor and all the new council members and to thank you all for serving the city of Pickens. It has come to my attention that the developers are currently in talks with the city regarding the development of the property that is referred to as Wolf Creek. As I drive around Pickens, I see the many homes with large yards inviting front porches in historic charm. A lot of these homes are on one acre lot sizes, but it is not uncommon for these homes to have one or two acres of property. I have many fond memories of growing up in a house on East Cedar Rock Street and living in this small town of Pickens. The Wolf Creek development of over 200 homes will change the small town community feel of Pickens forever. This particular property is only attached to the city by a mere 100 feet at the bottom of swampland that cannot even be seen from within the city limits. The property is surrounded by diverse wetlands, farmland, and a housing development that most of the lots are wooded and are over one acre in size. All of these surrounding areas are in the county and the development of this type would permanently change the country look and feel of this area. Does the developer realize that the surrounding land contain farm animals that are oftentimes noisy and stinky? Do they realize that in the county, you're allowed to shoot your guns on your own property? From my own experience, both of these are frequent occurrences. Can you imagine the complaints the city will receive from those living in this development that are not used to hearing farm animals and the sound of gunfire? Does Pickens really want to go down the same annexation path of easily, branching out like octopus arms? I encourage you to update the outdated comprehensive plan prior to deciding on this or any annexation and development. I also ask you to please put the existing citizens of Pickens and the surrounding community first and not fall to the wants of developers that have no permanent interest in Pickens. Pickens County has spent the last year updating the county development standards in order to control growth and make sure we maintain the beauty and character of our county. In December, the county issued a resolution calling on all municipalities to temporarily cease annexations in order to allow county planning staff to research a joint city and county planning commission. I have a copy of this resolution with details that I want to hand out to you. But if you have any questions, you could reach out to Ken Roper, the county administrator. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Winters. Next will be Ms. Lisa Ternick, Chamber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lisa Ternick with the Chamber of Commerce. Just want to invite city council to our next business before hours. It is at the sandwich shop at the Market at the Mill. And we will also be giving them the April member of the month banner.
All right.
So we'd love for you all to come out and meet the owner, Tammy, and have a sandwich and breakfast with her and her staff. And also while you're there too, we invite you to walk around the market at the mill and check it out. See what goes on there with your businesses there.
Thank you so much.
Love the Chamber banquet. I did not include that one.
All right.
A lot of events, just trying to keep them in order.
Thank you so much for keeping us informed too. Chamber is doing such a great job with new businesses coming in the town of Pickens and we want to be able to work with you in a grand way. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Now we have Mr. David Masters from Dakersville.
First of all, I'm not prepared, these two ladies are right here, but I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to come speak to y'all. This is my second time to attend. I'm gonna try to get more involved in my county and my city. Because now that I'm retired, I have a lot of time on my hands, so I can, I can do this. One thing that I just wanted to point out, and it goes back to a little bit what Mayor was saying just a few minutes ago. Since May, excuse me, March 11th was my first meeting that I attended. I myself was not happy with something that happened in here. And so I'm gonna make a suggestion. I don't know how you go about it, but I will be finding out how to go about it, whether you have a mayor or a strong mayor. I've always looked at as a mayor is a person who is leading everybody that is around him. I would look at him that way ever since I was a young man. And I just wanted to say that is my part because the mayor's been very nice to me. Chief Beach has always been wonderful to me. And that's just one thing that I wanted to say to everybody. Let's look at becoming a strong mayor. Not just that, that way we can turn around. And whoever is sitting in that seat, whoever is sitting in these seats can lead Pickens into the future because the future is coming whether we realize it or not. But I also would like to reflect, since you're talking about Market at the Mill, I do help every once in a while now that I have retired, Market at the Mill. And some people were misinformed on what kind of event is getting ready to happen on the 20th. This is a music event. There are people that are coming that are talents from TV. So you will get to meet other people that you may see on TV on a weekly basis. And some of those are my friends that I'm bringing in, as well as TMG Entertainment, who's bringing in seven of the nine bands that will be playing down there. So that's one thing, you know, if anybody's got any questions to me, if I can answer them, I will. If I can't, I'll get the answer for you. But I've invited everybody to come down, enjoy this. This is probably gonna bring, is a possibility of 5,000 people to the city of Pickens. And one of the problems that has given us a lot of fits is there's no place for anybody to lay their head. I saw a meeting one time before where people were talking about tourism dollars. Well, tourism dollars are not gonna be in Pickens City because there's nowhere to lay your head. So you're going out too easily. You're going to Pattersville, you're going to Clemson, and you're going to Greenville. And that's where they're having to do that. So that's where it's harder to bring your dollars in to help the city. Like you're talking about with the tower, Mayor. It's all right, you have got to bring in, you've got to have somewhere for somebody to lay their head. It's funny, you have Airbnbs, but not everybody has the money to go for an Airbnb. Most people are simple people, just like myself, that turn around, cannot afford an Airbnb. So that's the reason, like I say, that I have started working down there, not working, just helping out. I'm not paid or anything by anybody. I'm a retiree from BMW who has lived in Dakersville for 26 years, who grew up in Berea for the other time. I'm 66 years old, so I turned around, grew up in there for 40 years. And I saw what development can do because it is, it is really doing the same thing to Greenville. But back again, like I say, as the mayor, as the councilman, that discouraged me a little bit of seeing what transpired that day. And I hope that everybody can work together because I know everybody's new up here. I'm new at doing what I'm doing right now. I'm used to getting in front of thousands of people, but I'm not used to doing this. So I want you to think about that. Think about the city, not yourself, but the city. And put the city first because that way you have good growth and you can keep everybody happy to a certain point. You're not gonna make everybody happy because I'm sure everybody on the council didn't get 100% of the vote when you were running. So you can't please everybody. But anybody has any questions about the event that's happening down there, I'm easy to get to. I'm as easy to get to as y'all are. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You were right on the mark. Five minutes, you got every bit of it. All right, thank you so much for comments. Was anybody in here that didn't get a chance to sign in? Would like to make any comments? Okay. Number five, approval of minutes. Regular meeting of March the 11th, 2024. Work session, March the 25th, 2024, and special call meeting of March the 28th, 2024. Floor is open now for a motion to approve said minutes. We have a motion, Ms. Winters, we have a second. Second. The movement and property second, ready for a question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous? Thank you so much. Now we're ready for our administrative report. Mr. Tim O'Brien.
Mayor and council, people of Pickens. We do have an update. Been lots of interest from all of us in our audit schedule. It can't come any faster than we want it to, or not as fast as we want it to. But the auditors will be in our offices the week of April 22nd. Typically, they'll be here for four to five days to complete the groundwork for the audit. And hopefully we'll have that in hand by late May or June, certainly before we get into the process of approving our next budget. Pickens County did meet and has agreed to share the cost of $24,900, I believe it is, for transportation engineers to study the realignment of Pendleton Street to match it up with Ann Street and alleviate some of the parking concerns around the courthouse. It's a good opportunity for the county council and the city to work together. Mr. Roper, the administrator, said the council was very positive about working with the city on what is our shared downtown and the county seat. Secona Word, Secona Road Waterline Project is proceeding. Good work is being done to, to bring new infrastructure to that area that's gonna solve a lot of longstanding problems. It has not been without growing pains and inconvenience for some of the residents there. Some of the properties in that area are extremely sloped. So it has required some extensive digging and then rebuilding slopes and replanting grass. I have a councilman who has been impacted by that as well. And what I've been trying to assure people is that I'm making a commitment. We've spoken with our contractors and CWS that we're cracking the eggs and making the omelet right now, but it's gonna taste good when we're done. And we'll sprinkle some parsley on it and it'll look real nice. But we can't get there until we get there. Running those main lines, I think, is gonna take another couple of weeks and then they'll be running, just when everybody thinks it's over, they'll go back and dig more holes to put the service lines in. So everybody be prepared for that. So just wanted to address it and certainly call me if you have any specific problems that I can help with. As the project goes on, I'll be glad to go out there and try to sort out anything that we can do to make it less inconvenient, for folks. Last week, we were able to get together. This is some video of our Upper 12 Mile Creek inlet, which we approved. Council approved the rehabilitation of up to $100,000 to get this back online. If you see the grate in the middle that's covered in limbs, et cetera, that's where up to 900,000 gallons of fresh clean moving water could come into our water system. We use an average of 1.2 million gallons a day. And this will really reduce our sole dependency on city lake as a water source and will even out our water quality, especially when you have heavy rain events and drought. There's no action to be taken on this today. That was a special meeting last week. But this is a very noteworthy event. Wanted to make sure to point out that mobilization is occurring and they'll be starting that week and that work in the next week or so.
Yeah, they started raining quicker today. They should start maybe once a Thursday.
Okay, so this week. So it gave me a chance to climb down the very steep bank of the creek down there and I'm thankful that I got back out. The aforementioned water tower project, Representative Davy Hyatt was very effective in providing $150,000 in state funds. We did bid this out through the South Carolina Business Opportunities website. We had a posting on it for about three weeks and then we gave about three weeks for people to respond. I think I spoke to about a half dozen tank companies that do water tank maintenance and painting all around the southeast. What we found was that there was only one who we've talked to before who has any interest in rehabilitating non-functional historic water tanks. The rest of them pretty much want to work with existing water facilities and they did not end up submitting a bid. I was pleased that the original bid that came in was for $190,000. We were able to negotiate that down with the guy to 174. And looking at, we've got 150,000. In this fiscal year, they did divide their proposal. So if we get prepared, they're ready to mobilize. They actually have different phases of the project and costs so we could do the $150,000, the main scraping and the upfitting and the painting. And then taking it out of the system, cutting off and filling it with sand would actually be the $24,000 remainder, which could be done in the next budget year if council so desires. One key element of this, before we do anything else, is that I'd like to get the council, if not the public, involved in the fact that part of this proposal will be the hand painting of two logos on either side of the tank. That's a decision that I think certainly the council should make and perhaps even get some public interest involved and see if people are interested in using what's there now, some of the more historic logos or whatever. I'll leave that up to you guys and we will discuss that in work session to see what the best path forward is on that. But that's exciting to get that project funded and underway. In council's packet, as we've discussed a few times, we're gonna start doing flash reports for the meeting that takes place, the business meeting on the second Monday of each month. And basically, this is what we've captured in the flash report format to report on, you know, year-to-date, to budget revenue and expenses and all of our funds and our reconciled bank account balances. Furthermore, this report does include checking activity summary. And as council reviews this, certainly let me or Finance Director Mandy Hess know and we'll be glad to add additional information to it as we go. But hopefully this will provide a real snapshot and keep council and the public on top of where we are with our finances as we go. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Very informative. We have also count payables ledger in our packet also. Thank you so much, administrator and our finance director, for all your hard work and letting us, keeping us informed about our finances because it's hard to make a ill-informed or misinformed decision, especially about the finances. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Now we're ready to approve a resolution, number 2024 R7, naming Cottage Way Court. Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions. This money for the tank, does that include stabilizing the tank?
Yes, it does.
What, how are they gonna stabilize it with sand or?
Yes, it was 14 tons of sand.
Okay. So that, that'll take care of it and we won't have any liability?
Yes, it will.
The next thing is, have we got, we've received $250,000 grants from state money?
No, sir. It was $150,000.
How much?
It was $150,000.
What about the repairs and?
The sausage making at the State House, it arrived from the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department at the state under the header of City Hall Improvements. And they sent a whole bunch of forms where we had to fill out everything we were gonna do to our city hall. We sent them in, they thanked us, we shared that with council. And then Representative Hyatt said, whoa, 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 wait a minute. I called it City Hall Improvements because the state made me. But what I really meant was City Hall improvements that include the tower, which I don't know how that works. So we had to redo the paperwork to describe the work to the tower, which is what Representative Hyatt intended.
So I'm, I'm misinformed here, I suppose. I thought that when we approved the bathroom money, it was?
No, the bathroom money was from insurance proceeds from the roof.
And that covered all of it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm just misinformed.
We, we originally presented that we thought we would have the opportunity to do some, some upgrades around here that would have been nice if the state was gonna do it on their dime. But Representative Hyatt was adamant. I mean, and, and he has a right to be because he worked that money. The reason that they called it City Hall Improvements was something to do with house rules and how they were working their procurements. But he said, I assure you, it's not for that, it's for this. He spoke to the PRT folks and we had to go through some reshuffling.
So it's a good idea not to spend the state promised money until you get it in hand?
Exactly. It's very true. And it is, we received those funds today? So we do have them in hand at this point. But yes, to your point, don't spend them till you got them.
Wise words.
I see. The, the propensity regarding 178 Pendleton Street, did we not already have drawings done at some point of how that could be redone and relooked at?
We have a drawing from 2014, I think, from, it's a landscape architect and a city planner that did it. The transportation engineers, the, what they're gonna do is not say, here's a pretty picture and it would be a nice idea. They will specifically take all the state regulations on transportation, intersections, and they have existing kind of deep relationships with the DOT because those are DOT roads, based on what they encourage as far as pedestrian and traffic safety. So this is where you get into the actual, excuse the pun, rubber meets the road, where instead of drawing a picture, you actually, and they already know that it's viable. They would just have to show the turning radio, where you would begin that change, how it would impact parking. You've got to do all that due diligence in large part because I don't want the city of Pickens to pay for it. I want to make a case to the Department of Transportation that it would be safer for the drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists of Pickens and in the future for DOT to pay for some 90% of it. So we do have to bring them.
So we do have to bring them not completely engineered plans, but we do have to bring them something that meets their specifications.
Has anybody reached out to the DOT to see if this is even a possibility?
Yes, DOT is generally supportive of infrastructure improvements.
On this particular thing?
Yes, they have talked about it over the years.
Okay, so they've changed their mind in the last year?
Well, they haven't committed to doing it. They've said that, basically it's conversations of that'd be a great idea if we could do it.
Well, I think you probably need to talk to former Councilman Lark. The fellow that's over to the DOT engineering came over here and did a study and said that it wouldn't be feasible because the bank building and dominoes would have to go and all kind of stuff. So I'm not in favor of spending money on a study that it's not going anywhere.
And I, I have a question about that too. I mean, I look at this picture.
Who did you talk to?
The?
Where is this?
These decisions aren't made based on anecdotal evidence. They're just not.
Do what?
These decisions aren't made based on anecdotal evidence. They have to actually do the measurements and do the engineering.
Well, the man that's over came over here and did it, is all I know.
That's, that's not their typical practice, but I can revisit it with DOT.
Can you put a picture, this picture up there, the one that they have?
No, I don't have that.
You don't have that up? Okay, I mean, I don't understand this. I'm just trying to understand what, where's this road going to go? They're going to take this road and go through these buildings or?
No, they're going to go around the buildings. And we haven't committed to this. This was just an update on the fact that the county says that they would share it if we move forward with it. We can certainly put this on a work session.
Now I just was wondering what it's going to look like. Because I, I don't know how you, what, you're just going to change these traffic lights in here? Or, because these buildings got to come down if we're going to make this road the same. You know what I mean? I've tried to look at this and like, I don't, I don't understand.
You see this parking lot right here?
Yeah.
You don't go through those buildings. You go here.
Oh, so they're going, that's what I'm trying to figure out. We're going to go around to the left?
Yes. Right after the buildings. If we do it at all.
Oh, it's the parking lot and around the left is it? Yeah, that's all I'm trying to, that's all I'm asking.
I don't know how much of an angle, but it would angle right at Cedar Rock and go at an angle, maybe a 40-degree angle. I'm not good at that. I need my geometry teacher to be here. But it's an angle that goes there and then it was straightened out.
Okay.
But it's in the preliminary stages. It was a drawing that was basically a good idea with a city planner. And it was a master plan that was drawn. But all the somatics and everything that our administrator's talking about has not been done. So we have to look at that. But I agree with you, Councilman Healy, if, let's make sure that we can do it before. Is that possible?
I think if you'll talk with Brandon Wilt, he's, he's over, he's the chief engineer of the district now. He used to be a resident engineer and he's the one that did the study.
Okay.
Brandon Wilt.
Yeah.
When are, when are we going to have some bids on the tower? Administrator?
We just went over the bids on the tower.
Huh?
We just reviewed the bids on the tower.
Oh, you just, when are we going to have them? I mean, in front of council?
I can send them to you.
Okay.
But we just went over the numbers.
Yeah, I know. Is there, we have picked out a company already?
We haven't awarded a bid, but we'll.
I mean, is that something council is going to have to do?
Yes, we'll bring it before work session, but we have received bids.
Okay, cool. I just.
Also said it was just one company, right? It was all several, half a dozen companies. They said that they could not, five of them, six of them said they didn't want to deal with it unless it was an operational tower. There's only one company that gave a bid for one that's going to be non-operational.
The engineering is different, the whole.
They gave a bid of 190,000 and that was talked down to 174,000.
That's what that was about. Okay. So we have one bid and?
Only one bid from six companies.
Okay, alright, good.
But it has to be a decision process.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are we through, Mr. Administrator?
I believe so.
Alright. Prove of resolution number 2024 dash R seven. Naming Cottage Way Court. Who's going to give us? Jennifer, are you helping us with that? That's not your wheelhouse? This your wheelhouse?
Yes.
Alright.
The, and the developers are the owners of the property who I believe are in the process of selling or have closed on the property. The cottages at Pickens is under construction now. There is a short road, I don't know how many feet it is, but it ends in a cul-de-sac right down the hill here, that has been named by the County Cottage Way Court. It has been, we have a stamped engineering report from review there. They've done the, the proof roll on it. I've inspected it. And this is the point where, and we don't do this too often because it doesn't happen that often, but as these streets are completed, they have our stormwater and infrastructure under them. And we generally do a resolution and accept the deed of dedication for the ongoing maintenance of the street as part of the city street system. If you'll recall, and I don't remember the names of them, there were two prior streets that were abandoned on this parcel to make way for this development.
So this used to be the trailer park in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we just voting solely for naming this?
No, we're accepting a deed of dedication, so it would be part of this city street system. The county handles the naming under 911. Would you like me to read the resolution?
No, I'm done.
Sir?
I'm through.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions, man? Any concerns? Now this means if we name it, we take care of it. That's basically in layman's terms.
And it's the one street, we don't know how long the street is. Right? It's just a one street. So we've got one easement, utility easement.
The paving has been completed.
It has been.
We've got a stamped engineering inspection and I went over there after the proof roll to make sure it was in good shape.
Okay, good.
It's a 50-foot right of way. Gentlemen, how long is the street?
About 450 feet though.
450 feet. So not the biggest street in Pickens.
What utilities are running under that street? Sewer and?
Sewers at the, under the street, the water line goes around it.
Goes around it.
You have a question?
So we're accepting the maintenance of the street?
That's, that's going to be our street. It's not going to be a county road or a state road.
Right.
It's going to be a Pickens road.
Yeah, I mean, we're digging here, in there apartments where I crossed from it, you know?
Yeah.
On this end of it, where the city has all that, I think we should just take care of all of it. We have the police out.
We got everything around it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
This up for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this resolution to accept cottages at Pickens Development Street, namely Cottage Creek Way.
Can I get some?
Sir?
It's been moved in proper session. I'm ready for question.
No, I don't know.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Is unanimous?
Now, number eight, second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash O two to amend chapter 18, article four, section eight, 24, sexually oriented business of the official zoning ordinance, City of Pickens, South Carolina. This is our second reading on this said ordinance. Now, this is your wheelhouse, Jennifer. Come on up here and you stand up here for a while because we're going to deal with you.
This first one is, y'all have had the second reading. We had a discussion about taking all the sexually oriented business information, regulations out since we're not going to allow them. So it's kind of confusing that all the regulations were still in there. So that's, this one is just getting all the wording out. So that's all this one is.
Okay.
Any questions?
Jennifer's here, she can ask me. Can I have a motion for the second?
I make a motion.
It's been moved.
I make a second.
We have a second from Lloyd Rogers. It's been moved in proper session. I'm ready for question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Is unanimous? Thank you. Number nine, second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash O three to amend chapter 18, article four, section 409, research and limited industrial of the official zoning ordinance of City of Pickens.
This one y'all asked, Councilwoman Winter pointed out that I had missed one of the prohibited. That one, that one was allowing sexually oriented businesses. So that's what we came back in to change was to make sure that it was prohibited in that section. So now that every section will say it is prohibited. And it was also that tattoo parlors would be allowed in industrial and then anything industrial. And y'all have already done this first reading on that. So mostly was amended to make sure that sexually oriented businesses was listed as a prohibited use.
Okay. Good. Floor is open for a motion. It's been moved. Got a second? It's been moved in proper session. All ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Number 10, second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash O four to amend the FY 2023, 2024 budget ordinance. Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, I have a summary of the changes. We've got $4 million, including our bond draw from 2021 bond and additional expenses of 2.1 million dollars. To summarize, the differences, the additional revenues include the aforementioned $150,000 and the PRT state grant for city hall improvements, which actually means a water tower. And $5,282,055.74 for the 2021 bond draw of remaining funds. The amended budget additional expenses. We have some $14,000 for additional salary to accommodate a full-time clerk. And then we have a number of line items for additional fringe benefits for that position. Adjustments to accommodate shortages in what was calculated for the retirement budget line. Some $13,000 to allow for council health benefits. Then on the expense side, we saw it on the revenue side, but the expense side, now we're spending the $150,000 for the Water Tower project. A shortage of some $55,000 in our South Carolina Municipal Insurance Reserve Fund payments where those were miscalculated in the construction of the budget. $77,000 worth of salary moved from the utility fund for the reclassification of two stormwater techs who were transitioned to public works. This is really just filing the expenses in the proper place and moving them from one department to another. The next $13,000 is moving those retirements for the reclassified positions and then the fringe benefits down the line. The largest by far additional expense item is the $1,236,000 and change in the skip grant match for the $5 million waterline projects that we've got going on infrastructure-wise that's doing a lot of great benefit for our community but was not factored into the budget originally and needs to be accounted for. Because the, the feds are spending their share and they expect us to pay our part. The utility fund has an additional $500,200 that goes down to American Tank for tank maintenance of $96,000. Utility billing for sending out our utility bills of $30,000. The joint regional water system membership fee that we pay them of $30,000 was not included in the budget. We have had an emergency water spend of $4,200 from Greenville Water as a backup. A $30,000 de-hack fee. Our CWS contract has costs that the city must bear for items that end up costing more than $5,000. That totals $55,000. We've got engineering costs for the design of some stormwater projects that have been undertaken to correct drainage problems of $50,000. The technology component for our utility fund through VC3 was not incorporated into the original budget and that amounts to $65,000. And of course, there is a BACO that was purchased this fiscal year for $140,000 that was not reflected in the budget. And then $53,000 transfer to the general fund. So once again, the total general fund expense budget increase is $343,988.1 and the total utility fund expense budget increase is $1,790,659.77. So that is an overview of what we've got and I'm sure there will be questions.
And I'm just as lost as when I first started.
It's, yes, it's in your, it is all in your.
I saw this, but I mean, each one of those?
The ones that's highlighted in yellow?
The summary, the summary is in the packet.
Okay, I looked through it. I just, I didn't see it. As I look at the data, it's a good summary.
With all the expenditures, the ones that are highlighted in yellow?
Yes.
Is this the old accounting practices to put bond money in the general fund to show it as revenue?
No, the bond money is being put in reserves. It's just been drawn down from the bank.
Well, I thought you said that you, that was in the revenues, that that $5 million.
It is among our revenues that we have brought it down, but it is in reserves.
So is that going to show as a, if you put it, it looks like it's going to make our budget look like it's more than it is, if you, if you declare it as revenue?
If you go back to the finance flash report that you received and look at the bank reconciliations, it's in a savings account. It's, it's there. And actually, we're not currently, but the budget that we're planning, we have a requirement that the city has not met for many, many years of having a 24% reserve against our general fund.
We were told different than that about three years ago, I know.
A lot of different things that have happened at Pickens.
Yeah.
We had more money yet than we should have in the reserve fund.
I would not concur.
You heard it now.
You're right.
I would not concur with that opinion.
It's sad, didn't believe you. Said I had never heard. So how, how is it that, it sound like you? Sound like you have three, three significant expenses that the last budget missed.
That is true.
How in order to that?
I don't know. Thank God I wasn't here.
Yeah, I know you weren't here. I was like, wow.
Why don't we wait till we get our audit and see where this money went? Why don't we wait till we get our audit and see where this money went and make sure we got money to do this?
I mean, we really don't have any options, right? I mean, it's, I mean, if we say no, we're not gonna do this, then where does that leave us?
Technically, in this situation, the federal government would shut down. Municipal government doesn't have.
Pretty much, we got to basically keep moving along. We got to zero it out, do we not, so?
And the audit will not show us that we have more money or less money than we know exactly what we have now. It will show us if we could have had more money, if things have been spent responsibly in the past.
So what do you mean exactly by moving along?
Moving along what?
He said that we will, we need the money to move along, what does that exactly mean?
That means to be in.
We'll be able to make payroll, we'll be able to make the everyday stuff.
Right, in, in.
Yeah, we'll still be able to do that, right?
Under code, state and city code, we're supposed to have a balanced budget that you're in, out.
But when you say that we're gonna shut the government down, you make everybody have to hear things, that everything's gonna shut down.
Well, he said that was the federal government.
That's what it sounds like to people.
It's not possible for.
Yeah, but I know that, but I just wanna make sure if I understand that. Cause I mean, you know, of course, you know, if I vote against it, we're gonna shut it down, shut it down, then, boy, ain't I gonna be something?
Well, I just don't, I don't like voting for something that I don't totally understand.
Okay, I tell you what we're gonna do.
Okay.
We're gonna open the floor for a motion, okay? And we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
And then when we vote on it, it will either pass or it won't pass. Is that fair?
That's fair enough.
All right, now I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Just cause you make a motion, that don't mean.
You're a dog act.
Yeah, you know what I mean? I need a second also, so we can put up a vote.
I'm second.
Okay, we got a second. Are you ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand.
No, more question?
More question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I still, I mean, you're saying that the, the three somehow know that it was just missed? You mean the people that didn't get, the last council did not get it into the budget? Um, I just wanted to that, that was like a hundred and fifty grand, they didn't know?
A hundred and fifty grand?
Or more.
One point.
Yes.
That was two million.
No, no, I'm talking about just the, the three things I was talking about. The, the, uh, I think you named three different things that, that just weren't included in the budget.
The, the largest being the one point two million dollars for the match to skip.
Okay, that's for this, okay.
Which we, we have to match.
We have to match?
We have to.
Do we have a time, do we have a timeframe to match? Are we, are, gotta be done tomorrow, or?
Are we done, are we done that thing? Platoon order has got to be, and you got to, we got to have this pass to zero our budget, correct?
That project is, yes.
What, what were you saying? I'm sorry, what did you say?
We have spent that one point two, it's been paid to the construction company.
That's why the project's ongoing.
So it's done, pay, so what's the big hurry?
Well, the, the hurry is, is that.
What is the benefit, I wanna ask this, what is the benefit of not putting it, this is for accounting purposes? What is the benefit for not doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The benefit is to find out where this money was spent and who authorized it. Somebody had to authorize the spending of this money.
I think we got a bunch of stuff as who authorized.
Okay, well, that's what we need to find out.
My thanks to people for asking, having me getting that information.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think some people's been asking and not getting that information. That's, you know, you can't expect us to make a vote on something when you don't have it, complete all the information on something, it's the same way, it's gotta be done. You know, I don't, and I put down, you know, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Um, that's why I asked, when anybody gets in touch with the finance director for information, that it goes to everybody. That was what I was saying, that I did with the employee and asked him to do something, give a directive. I think that was a good directive, so everybody can have that information. Y'all been having a flood of information that you probably hadn't even looked at. It's a lot of information.
I've looked at every bit of it. I don't understand some of it, I'm not an attorney or an accountant.
I'm an accountant, I understand.
But I want somebody to lay it out to me so I can understand. This was spent out of this budget and why it was spent and who authorized it, because somebody is, this is not the proper way to run a business.
You're right. You're right.
And I agree.
And I'm not gonna be a part of it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and that's just me, and y'all have your vote, do whatever.
But we got to right the ship.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're trying to do, is right the ship. And it's all for accounting purposes. Then we're gonna have our audits gonna come forth and give us a clear statement of wisdom.
In the audit, we're gonna be told who, who gave the authorities that money, so.
And, and my feeble way of looking at things, this not strictly for accounting purposes, this should be for a way to us to move forward, to see who made these mistakes, correct them and make sure it don't happen again.
Yeah.
So is that all?
What I saw in the emails that we got and the information we got, we can't correct them because they're not here.
Well, let's just show me that, that's all I ask.
And I apologize if there was any communicate, uh, communication or confusion about the shutdown thing, but basically what I'm trying to say is that, under my code with ICMA, exactly what you're talking about, every time I authorize an expense without this budget being corrected to a zero balance, I'm doing exactly what we're complaining about people doing. And two years down the road, nobody will know that I did this because I inherited this, and we just have to keep the doors open, but.
Well, you shouldn't want that more than any.
I absolutely do.
To show where we're coming from, so let's just get it.
We, but we, you're bringing, you're riding the ship now, meaning, I mean, you're.
And the mayor and I were part of that before. We approved that budget.
And we dropped the ball.
Well, if we did, we did, I, I relied on the former administrator and our finance director. And I said, I'm gonna have to rely on this time.
And when are we gonna know? I mean, that, you know, we can't even get this past audit done, we want, we, we would really like to know. I mean, we, you've taken these courses, and I've finished the courses, I think just about everybody's working on or finished them, that, that are available to us, we are, we are liable, you know what I mean, as, as council? You know what I mean, for the money that's being spent here and, and, and making sure that it's being spent correctly and judiciously and, you know what I mean, and it's not going out the door? I mean, these are the people's money, so we're responsible for it, and that, I just wanna make sure that.
Now, I'm working every day, I think you know that.
I know that, I know, I'm not talking about you.
I can't do that for ten months ago.
Yeah, I know.
I can't.
I know, I agree, I agree with you, but.
Is there like, I'm, I mean, is there something that's gotta be done tomorrow, or something we can? Since we have such a difference of opinion going on right now?
I mean, we just have to do it, when we may comply with state law, anytime.
Then what do you mean by that's compliance?
I mean, we're not complying with state law.
But I'm with.
We are way out of whack, I'm a bit.
How long have we been non, and non-compliant?
Since the day I walked in the door, I don't know about anything.
Two years.
No week or two will hurt that.
Well, three years, if you count all the years that we haven't had audit, you've been far out of the state law, and one thing I promised when I took this job, mostly to the people of Pickens, was I wasn't gonna break the law.
Yeah.
And I just have to put everybody on notice.
And I'm trying not to.
I'm breaking the law, and that includes the rest of us.
And when I put my hand up and said I was representing, I'm representing the people, so, I mean, so, I mean, that's why I'm speaking up the way I am right now. I just feel like with the, with the difference of opinion right now, it's something I, maybe we should table, I mean, if there's, you know.
It's already emotional before, I'm just gonna say. Now, we can just go ahead and vote.
Who's second, I don't remember a second.
Yeah.
Who did you go?
Would, would you bring this information to us, Minister?
Absolutely, it's gonna come to you.
I mean, we want to know this before the audit even, cause that, that means a year or two down the road.
Yeah, I can tell you right now that the administrator's office is responsible. And the council approved it. That's the end of the story.
I'm not really interested in who's responsible right now, that's my thing, I'm worried about right now.
That's, that's.
That's, I hear that too much, well.
Well, that's what we got to do, it's a pity because councilman nearly wants to know.
Yeah.
I per se, I per se don't need to know who, I just know, I don't know why and what we're doing not to get that.
Legally, we got to know.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry.
If there's malfeasance, we have to know as a council.
Right.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, it's been moved in property second. All in favor for the amendment of the budget, raise your right hand. All in yes, raise your right hand. It's forwarded to. Now, let's get it within law.
Yes, sir. Gets us a long way.
Mm-hmm. All right, number eleven, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh five, to amend chapter eighteen, article four, section four-ten, R L, is that one I? General, I, General Industrial District.
Thank you again.
Yes.
Um, this one is first reading, when I went through all the sexually oriented business stuff, I found one more that was in this one. This will cover everything, there will be no sexually oriented businesses after this one, this will be listed as prohibited, and we will be done with this. Well, this is your first reading, you gotta come back to a second reading, but this will be it, I promise. I'm not gonna come here and talk about it anymore.
Okay, can I have a motion for first reading?
Make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. You got the names? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous?
Thank you for your diligence.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, approval administrator's recommendation of website bid. Administrator, tell us your recommendation one more time.
Uh, we have a bid from Ingenious of Greenville, South Carolina, for the first phase of the, uh, multimedia project, which would be nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh, the complete construction over a period of twenty-four to thirty-six months. Uh, they gave a range of twenty-seven to, uh, twenty-seven thousand to fifty thousand over that period. Um, in my professional experience, which I spent twenty-five years doing exactly this, um, I think it would be more like twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars, and that's what we're gonna hold them to, to get what we need.
What do we need? Tell us what we need.
Um, we need, um, a better repository of our records so that we can be transparent, so that as we discuss these items, that, um, all of the things that we collect can be made readily and easily, user-friendly available to people. Um, we need people throughout the city to be able to, uh, pay their bills easily. Uh, we need to be able to, uh, communicate, uh, especially when we do have, uh, water main breaks, which is a, a part of life for any system. Uh, we've got, uh, health and safety issues that we need to get out as far as, uh, uh, water alerts, and, and the technology that will come with this will actually, um, do geo-fencing, it will bring us into the modern era where we can talk to our GIS folks who are doing the work, and we can identify what neighborhood, you know, is it everybody who's within two blocks of Ally's House, Councilman Winter, I'm sorry, uh, that needs, uh, the water, uh, the boil water advisory, and we can actually send it out to those people so that everybody in town is not concerned that they need to do it. Um, it's really more of a, you know, you've got a phone in your pocket that you do business with your bank with, uh, your real estate, um, we really need to get to the point where, uh, people aren't, uh, having to come up to city hall if they don't want to come to city hall. Uh, our feed, freedom of information, uh, requests are basically tracked at this point, uh, on pieces of paper. Uh, those are not going away, and we need a repository so that we can track those, because again, that's legal compliance. As soon as we receive an F O I request, which we're getting more and more of, um, you have to track the number of days, have you responded? You have to have an audit log in case anybody ever challenges you, and then you have to have a repository where you can put the information. So if others wanna see what, for instance, you requested, they can go in and look at the documents that have been provided. Basically, websites of the past were more of a flat display that said, here's a pretty picture of Pickens, and here's the name of the mayor and the council members. Uh, this will be much more interactive and actually provide services, yes.
It'll be an onion instead of a flat.
Right, and you know, you could, you know, report, um, missed garbage pickups, you could check schedules and schedule changes. Uh, a lot of this is somewhere on the website now, but it is so arcane and things have been glued to it, uh, that it's very, very difficult to, to navigate. And if you look through the website, there are whole areas that just don't work as they were originally.
Will this be able, will other departments be able to be under this as well? So, for instance, if you wanted to register your child for volleyball at the rec department, there would be a link on our page to go to the rec department and register your child.
And that's part of what they will build, is currently, the, the recreation department, thank goodness, is on the cutting edge of technology and offers, uh, kind of the, the spirit of what I'm talking about for their clients and customers and the, the athletes, where they manage, you know, facility rentals and, you know, team sign-ups, volunteers, uh, background checks, all of that. We'll be able to incorporate that in an overall, uh, system that does that for all of the city services. And people can report all kinds of, you know, if they come by and there's a trash can turned over, they can hit a button and do it. The other part would be to tie this into, again, we're working off of clipboards and baskets from the nineteen fifty, when there's a work order, somebody needs this done. Imagine how much better it would be if you saw that there was a water leak on your street, you just went on your phone and said, there's a water leak. And much like Duke Power System for, um, streetlights, which is very user-friendly, it would send you a text message and said, we've received your complaint, somebody will get back to you, and then it's our job, customer service is the highest priority for me. It's our job, that human piece of it, is that now an alert has gone off for the workers responsible for checking the water leak, and they need to get back to that resident and say, thank you for reporting it, we're gonna be out to fix it, we expect it to be done by this time. And then you can track those promises, um, which we're not doing any of that now. And, and that's what people, uh, expect of technology to deliver to them.
Very good, yes, sir.
How much, how much background check did, did we do on this company Ingenious? I, I've heard some stuff, there was, and I know everybody has that experiences, you know, with this, that and the other, you know, there's.
Um, I talked to a number of their customers who've had, uh, very good experiences with them and, uh, and some that, that complained about, uh, reactiveness and, uh, and, and basically, the ones that were complaining about reactiveness, they generally, when we went through the conversations, they said, you know, maybe if I run them down more and I expected them to do, do it on their own, I don't expect them to do it on their own, I'm gonna ride herd pretty heavily on these guys. And like I said, this is part of my core experience, so.
Okay.
They'll have to eat their weedies to, to figure out to get, get around my demands, so.
Okay, so you, you're gonna be managing this, you're really close to it.
It's very important to me, I think it's, it's core in these days and times, um, to what communities need to do.
Yeah, I agree with you, it's just, I'm, the company itself, I was just.
What's the total cost?
Um, the, the, the first phase, the professional services part of it, is ninety-five, uh, nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-four. Um, and then they estimated that based on what we come up with, it's how many bells and whistles during that period do I say we need this, we need this, we need this? And they're gonna come back with a grandiose price, kinda like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, do the water tower, then I'm gonna beat them up, we're gonna negotiate. But this will be over a twenty-four to thirty-six month price, process, and it won't just be for a website, we'll get a website pretty cheap, it'll be for all those pieces and parts, you know, as you add each one, and all of those will probably come back to council as, here's something that they wanna add that could cost us ten thousand dollars, could cost us fifteen, but this is why we think it's a good addition, this is where it could save us money, um, this would, this is where it could streamline the process.
So it's more or less an open, open-end contract that we don't know what the total cost?
It's not, the only contract that we would be in was, is for the initial phase to do. It's not, the only contract that we would be in was, is for the initial phase to do the assessment and to build, to build exactly what you're asking. So they give us a guaranteed maximum price.
So it's nine thousand dollars, ninety-five hundred dollars to get us started?
Right.
Right. And then, what's extra? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very elementary, please help me, I'm not as smart as you.
Basically, the, yes, you are. Um, I would anticipate that the, the basic wireframe of a website that has pretty pictures on it and headlines would be ten to fifteen thousand dollars, um, in the coming budget year. But then all these things I'm talking about, like tying it in and building a work order management system that specifies all the streets and all the issues that we wanna take care of and the FOI piece, that would probably be another ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
So that's about twenty-five, thirty thousand?
I'd say a maximum of thirty additional dollars, thirty thousand additional.
On top of the ninety-five?
Yes.
Over three years?
Yes.
And then, then it, then it goes away, or is this a yearly?
This would go away until, um, it's time to, in very, and, you know, you have to, to look at these things every four or five years. Um, the Revive, I think that's the name of the company, the other, uh, large bidder basically had ten thousand four hundred dollars per year for four years, was the contract they wanted to get into. And still, that would include, they had all the language for, if you really wanted to do anything, you've gotta pay us to build this. One reason that I like this is exactly to your point. I had them build it into this first phase because it's got non-appropriation language in it. If we spend that amount of money, we'll get a plan for what we want to do, and we'll get all of those things laid out. Um, if we're not satisfied with our relationship with them, we've still got a good engineering plan for what we need to build. And the non-appropriation language is, we're not committed to move forward with them on the actual construction of all those tools, unless things are moving along in a satisfactory way. And then you break each element of that into pieces that we would bring back and we would discuss with council and go, do you want something that works like this, and this is how much it's gonna cost?
So, you know, no more additions will be given or done until it comes back.
Exactly, and that's why I did it, that's why I did not wanna go with the, um, uh, the other company, A, because they're out of Troy, Michigan, I've got nothing against Michigan to anybody, um, but I want somebody who's closer by, and their contract was, you're locked in for ten thousand four hundred dollars a year for four years. Um, I don't believe in binding one council year after year. I want things in chunks so that we're complying with, uh, with not getting out over our skis and committing to, to long-term things. With the exception of, you know, we've, we've got a, a long-term contract with CWS, I wasn't here for the negotiation of that, but that's kind of a different, uh, animal, but that's something that councils should only do.
Do we own the source code, and it, it is, it's something that is, it's regular, regularly used in the industry? So that if, if they moved out after a year, we didn't like their prices, then, then we would have something that someone else could just say, yeah, we can start right there and start it.
The, actually more so than our current website provider, um, this company, it was in specifications of what I wanted, they use WordPress, which WordPress is, it's commonly known name, but it's open source, it's owned by the world. Um, so they can't build something in WordPress and then say, well, you can't use it. And the report and the work that we will do, which will actually involve not just a report, it will involve gathering the information, and, and Brian and I are gonna work with them on, um, what, what information do you need to describe your services? Who are we talking about? So when we get to the end of this ninety-five sixty-four, we'll have an action plan with specific, um, sections of the website mapped out. What they would want money from then is, okay, we've got your content, we've got your text, we've got Floyd Rogers biography, we've got his picture, now do you want us to put it in a container and put it on the internet? And like I said, if the relationship isn't going well, we would say, no, we wanna take all that information and work with somebody else.
Right.
But we would have that option under breaking this contract the way.
I use the wrong terminology, the source code, we would know, the programming that they did, you know, to complete our, our website, we would own that.
It would all be WordPress, which is open source.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of the offers, uh, some offers did not submit proposals because there are a lot of proprietary, um, uh, content management systems that we would not, and I don't wanna have anything to do with those.
Right.
Can we at this time approve ninety-five hundred dollars and then?
How much is it gonna cost right now?
Ninety-five.
I thought, uh, that's for three years.
No, that's for the phase one.
Phase one, ninety-five.
Right.
I know.
Right.
Are we gonna vote on each stage or phase or?
Yes, sir.
We, we will include, um, dollars, and, and we're gonna, we're getting ready to start. Um, and I missed that in my administration, but it's good, glad you brought that up. Um, we're trying to set up and, and wanna bring that to council tonight, um, a, a budget work session, because we do wanna get in and have you dig in with us to line by line, all of our revenue and expense, uh, projections for the next budget year. Um, and what we would do is we would include, um, you know, at this point, uh, looking at the numbers, what we can afford to do, either twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in the, the coming year, but all of that will be debated and approved by council. There not gonna be some continuation of that. What you're committing to is spend nine thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars, which will produce an actionable document from which our content will be available to build a website, whether we build it with this company or somebody else.
Nine thousand five hundred sixty-two?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. And what does it cost to maintain our, what we have right now?
Hmm, I don't have.
So we'll have a difference.
Uh, it's, the, and it's hard to tease it out, we're, we're spending a significant sum with, I can't remember the name of the company that we're currently working with, um, but they have annual operating expenses, we'll, we'll have that when we go over there.
Okay.
But, um, and they have a very proprietary, difficult to use, outdated system.
I tell ya, I don't have any problem using the one I got right now, I pay my bill online, everything else, not looking. But I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
So the.
And this would come out of the general fund, correct?
Correct.
The one we just amended?
No, sir. Alright, um, yes.
Yeah.
And that was, the, this amount was in the original approved budget, albeit one of, it was one of the few lines that wasn't touched and exceeded, but was in the original.
This was in the original group of those.
Well, this is not our fund or anything else that we're going to get money from?
I think it may have actually been from our funds.
Okay.
Um, and this would be for, we still have six hundred and nine thousand dollars balance, which would be exclusive of these funds, which have already been budgeted and pulled into the budget since approval of July one, uh, twenty twenty.
Well, let's spend that, so everybody keep a sticker in their hand, get that out of you.
It would be helpful not to have that.
I'll second that.
Why don't, why can't we use that for this budget amendment we just passed? Use that much, put that in there and use it?
It can be.
That's what I say, do and get it, everybody act like it's play money and phony money or something, so just get rid of it.
So that would be part of, on the twenty-ninth, yeah, if we could call council to see if, if they're available to have a budget work session, we can dive into questions exactly like that. Right now, from, from my standpoint, I'm looking at, we have our regular views on the second and fourth. Um, as much as we want to, we can meet on the interim, uh, Mondays to really dig into the, the budget and share with you what the thought processes are there.
I really want to.
I appreciate it.
Me, you, you're right with me, uh, Councilman Neely, I wasn't as totally engaged with, with the budget and all that I should have been. Um, for whatever reason it may be, I had reasons, but I didn't have an excuse. But now I want all of us to be engaged and informed. And also, with, like you said, line by line, we need to really look at the budget together, um, and be respectful to everybody's opinion. You know, we had, we got some good opinions from everybody, even sometimes I've heard, just tonight, I didn't agree with certain things at first, but once I heard it, it made me see things differently. That helps us be more productive, that's all I want it to do. Right now, we need to approve, if we can, this administrator's recommendation for the website. We can use the money as we get together, I, we see fit as a council. Really, y'all have that power, and I want you to exercise. Um, but I also understand that people are looking at us and see if we're being good stewards with this money. Uh, that being said, can I have a motion to approve administrator's recommendation with an underline that it's for nine thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars? To start the first phase? Got a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
It's been moved by the, second by four. Ready for question?
I'd just like to say that I'm in, I'm in favor of doing this, I see, I pay my bill online as well and have no issue doing so, but there are a lot of holes in our website, and it's one of the first things that people Google or look for when they decide to visit or move to Pickens.
Yes.
And I think it would be extremely beneficial to give it a total review.
This would bring us into the future.
And also look at what we have available, I mean, I'm on two as on horn, I mean, we have somebody's administrator that's been in that business for over twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Uh, that can really help us get a very comprehensive, uh, website that can be second to none. Um, I just know that that can happen, so let's give him a chance to move forward, alright? We've been having a motion that's been second, are they in on the question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we're ready for number thirteen, approval of request from the Chamber of Commerce, event funding. Alright, come on.
Mr. Mayor and Debbie, uh, will come up, I just wanted to say that since our, uh, last interaction here, we, we worked together and tried to, uh, right-size the expense on this and, and look at where we are budget-wise. Um, Debbie was very helpful in, in trying to, uh, find the best bang for the bucks, which is funny when you're talking about fireworks. But I do wanna, um, show my appreciation to Debbie in the chamber for, for really rolling up their sleeves and trying to collaborate to, to find, sharpen their pencil and find the best way that we can get this done, and I'll turn it over to, to Debbie to make her request.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate it. Um, because we have a wonderful city clerk, city clerk, you have before you the information about the one event that we can do. Um, I think it's what, is what we're leaning towards now, to have one really good event, um, in June, and just kinda get people back out and doing some things until we can move forward in another direction later in the next budget year. So, anyway, that's what you have before you, one, one event at the amphitheater. Includes all this stuff, so, and, and just to, to, to let you know, when we get a contract on, on somebody that's coming in to, to do music or whatever, we, we have to like adhere, like if they want green M and Ms, we have to provide green M, I mean, that's just part of it. So there is a line item in there for their, um, a meal, that kinda thing, so. But I have a wonderful friend that does some catering, so she always helps us out.
So, I have a question. Come here.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, so, if we approve this, where is this money coming from?
Um, these will be ARBA funds, um, we did have, um, purchased a, a used vehicle off of, uh, for police, uh, the thirty-six thousand dollar ARBA line item. Uh, police department did a great job of getting that from state, uh, surplus, got a very good vehicle, and they got it for eighteen thousand dollars. Which, when Debbie then called me and said, I need basically seventeen, I said, God has spoken, that's where we'll move the money. Um, so I told the, the police department, thank you for getting a good deal, now the rest of the money is, um, is gonna get moved if council is so willing, but, um, I think that was, in, instead of having to come out of fund balance, um, I think that that's a, a reasonable solution, so that we can meet these guys halfway. They did a lot trying to pare down the requests, so we wanna work with them.
Yes. Good question. Anybody else? Do I, any to answer that question?
That's it, the chamber is contributing funds as well.
Were you able to get any?
Sort of.
Five thousand?
Yeah, about fifty-three, right at five thousand dollars.
You were able to, you said you were gonna visit, I think, some local businesses and see?
Well, I've been a little crippled, so I haven't been able to get out there and go on it too.
Okay.
Um, just yet, but yes, we will, I do have two contacts, um, that I'm, that I know that I feel like they will do something, um, one being, um, Blue Ridge Electric, and then the other being Duke Energy, so.
So if we, if we approve this, then, and, uh, then they contribute, then?
Then we'll move into the, to the new budget year.
Okay.
And use that money hopefully for the new budget year, 'cause I'm sure it will, I don't know how all their budget, budgets run of this, this past year, what fiscal year it is for them.
So you keep that money separate, and, you know what I mean, to go toward?
I will have to talk to Tim about that.
That won't go into your general fund?
No, it will not go into the general fund, no. You know how when you saw that events money that the chamber has, it would, if, if anything, it would go into that money or come to the city, whichever Tim prefers. Or you all, whichever you all prefer.
That will be part of our, uh, budget work session, uh, a couple of things, first with, um, another thing I have a good deal of experience in is soliciting, um, donations from companies and high net worth folks, and, and, uh, I'd, I'd love to work with Debbie in the chamber, and, and we're gonna work on doing some of that together, trying to make sure that we're, we're, we're getting matching funds from the community. Um, we should subsidize activities in the community and not a hundred percent pay for them, um, in the budget. Just my philosophy on this is that the city shouldn't be in the entertainment business directly. We should have a contract where we get a detailed budget request from community organizations, be that the Chamber or the Isaiah Festival, and then instead of writing checks and using city credit cards, we actually provide funds against those budgets which are segregated and then audited, um, and to the point of control, the first time they mess up, they don't, they don't get an allocation anymore.
Right.
But, uh, but we will go through that as part of our, our budget process, it would be a, a different, and I believe, uh, more accountable, more productive, and more of a community, uh, shared, uh, mission and expense, 'cause we're gonna get some, some sponsors to help defray these costs.
Good.
And I hope when people have questions, just come to, to the council, to, to the, you know, to you guys or to us or somebody who have questions about what we're doing, 'cause we're an open book, so, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm making a motion if we approve this.
Um, what are we approving?
You know there's a basketball game later in the night.
Yeah.
It's, but the first part of this is we're approving twenty-six.
Twenty-six hundred.
Fifty.
Plus the seventy.
Twenty-six hundred.
Fifty plus seventy-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
And that's all, that's the request for the, for the remaining.
That's the down payment, seventy-five is the down payment on the fireworks, plus then the other part to, to, to do that one concert.
Yeah, it has foreshadowed what they anticipate that they will ask for in the next fiscal year, but this gets us on the books with the, the fireworks folks, gets them their deposit, moves us to where we wanna be with one event, um, and then we consider the rest of it, uh, with the upcoming budget as a shooting.
Okay.
So we're going for twenty-six hundred fifty dollars approval tonight?
No, plus seventy-five.
Plus seventy-five hundred for next?
For the fireworks, the deposit has to be done before June thirtieth.
Okay.
This fiscal year, or supposed to be this fiscal year.
Okay, we have one motion, it's already on the floor, we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and promptly seconded, I agree with the question, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank y'all so much for all the hard work you've done, I really appreciate working together. This is wonderful, I just thank you all for all the hard work you've been doing. I thank council for how we able to work together and get some things done, thank you so much. Number fourteen, convening to executive session, thirty dash four dash seventy, A-one personnel matter as it relates to an amendment of employment contract for an individual reporting to council, city council. Could I have a motion for Sid?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You then. Excuse us, we're gonna have a. Excuse us, we're gonna have one. We got a second? It moved and promptly second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We just got there talking about, um, making a change in addendum to a contract for one of our employees. Um, we as a council see that we don't need to do that. And we're just gonna keep it as it is and we're gonna move forward. That being said, I need one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Lord, you say.
Second.
It's been moved and promptly second. All in favor, say, raise your hand. It's been done. Now thank y'all so much.
Okay.
Good meeting.